Okay, so I'm gonna call to order, regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Today is October 19th, 2020 at 6:30 PM. The first, before we get to our first, I wish the approval of minutes. I'm gonna make a motion and then we can discuss it. I'd like to either add an executive session or change the wording on the current executive session. And I'll, and I'll tell you why. On Friday, when we were working on the agenda, it should say Assistant Assessor Hiring Committee, which is what the executive assess purpose is for. The way it's written, it's discussion Assistant Assessor Position, which would lead you to believe we were discussing potentially a personnel matter. There's actually no one in that position and we would have to then invite that person in. So I can move to change the wording or add a completely separate executive session.
I think change the wording is fine.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to change item 11 to executive session Assistant Assessor Hiring Committee.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. I apologize for that. We made the change in the wrong edit, got over to the town clerk's office. Alright, so the next item on our agenda is approval of minutes from our October 5th meeting. You should have them in your packet.
I would make a motion to approve the minutes of the October 5th meeting with the following corrections. On page two, under Public Works, DPW now has a certified welder. It says red, I think I should put on his full name, Jeff Hanson.
Correct.
Under Old Business, under COVID-19 update, First Selectman Wasensky states that the town currently has 24 COVID cases. I think that should say is commutatively had 24 cases since March. And
The, the next line John does say she reminds residents this number is as of March. Or we could say total 24 total cases.
Um, yeah. Well, and she's
I'll let you finish.
Well, it's still a little confusing. Reminds residents that this number is as of March. Well, that says that that's what we had in March and we've had. So I like the cumulatively since March. We've had 24 cases. And finally, under Good and Welfare, I think we got a tax penalty for, with your ballots. I'm not sure that's a good idea. The last sentence there, she also notes the tax penalty that needs to be deleted. And that's what I have.
Alright, I'll second that discussion. So under Good and Welfare, I, I would say the, the change should be, she notes that the tax penalty, if tax payments are not postmarked, because they were two separate items.
Well, I'm, if that's supposed to be a separate
They were, we, we discussed and then reminded folks the, of the penalty for tax payments that were not postmarked by October 1st.
Well, you'd already covered that in the selectman status report.
I did, and I, and I repeated it again in Good and Welfare so that it was out there. And folks understood now that we had gotten past the October 1st deadline, that now they were going to see a 6% penalty. And so it was a completely separate statement.
So we need to
So we can, we can give it a separate line?
Parenthesis into a different, yeah. Because it has nothing to do with the election, which is what the first part of it is.
Right. Alright, so we'll note that the tax penalty was 6% if tax payment envelopes were not postmarked by.
Okay.
Any other discussion on the minutes? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Right, that's three ayes. Alright, next item, present to speak. If anyone on the line would like to speak, we ask that you identify yourself for the record and limit yourself to two minutes. You do have the ability to unmute yourself. Anyone would like to speak?
Pete Tanaka, 125 Mason Road.
Go ahead.
I'd noticed that on, on the agenda tonight that you are talking about the school roof. I just want to make sure that we do that forthwith. It's been a project that's been in the works for some time. It's important to the Board of Finance. We've allocated a million dollars and I think that, that kind of emphasizes how important we think it is. Thank you.
Anyone else present to speak?
Yes, Jim Bullock, Laurel Drive. I was Chair of the Board of Finance at the time that we appropriated $1 million, or I should say, the townspeople voted on our CIP plan to allocate $1 million in the repair of the school roofs. And we were told that at the time that it was very important that, that needed to happen. And, and I'm surprised that here we are in 2020. And perhaps going into 2021 and the roofs are not yet on the plan to get done. And I'm, I'm very disappointed. We were told this was an urgent requirement. We've made sure it was funded that way. It prioritized over other important, very important CIP items. And I like to, if it's that important, I want to see it acted upon. Thank you.
Anyone else present to speak?
I have a letter that from Matt Clark that he asked me to read into the minutes. Under, present to speak, since he's working tonight and can't make the meeting on his own. From G. Matthew Clark, 42 Burt Latham Road, to the Board of Selectmen. Why did the town of Wellington appropriate money two years ago for school roof repairs? And then failed to complete the project? It is my understanding that this project was approved by the Board of Education, approved by the Board of Finance and approved by the people of Wellington in a town meeting. I can think of only three reasons. Reason one, we never needed the school roofs in the first place. This doesn't make sense, but I guess it's possible. I asked about the school roof situation two months ago in a Board of Finance meeting. Erica immediately texted the superintendent and Mr. Stevens replied, the roofs are not leaking. Why did we appropriate over $100,000 for a project that we apparently don't need? Reason two, roof repairs are needed, but they are not a high priority. This also doesn't make sense, but it's possible. Did the condition of the school roofs miraculously improve, making roof repair a low priority item for the past two years? Reason three, roof, roof repairs needed, but Mr. Stevens doesn't want to spend money on our existing school buildings because he prefers waiting for one or more new school buildings to be financed and built, which could take several years. I would like to know if the unexplained delay in fixing the school roofs has resulted in the roofs being damaged. Mr. Stevens is apparently too busy to manage roof maintenance. So I think the proper course of action is for the Board of Selectmen to charge the town engineer with assessing the school roofs for damage because the repair never took place and managing the process of hiring and monitoring a contractor to complete the roof project that was approved by the people of Wellington two years ago. I think the town engineers should also inspect our school buildings for other side, so neglected maintenance and report his findings back to the Board of Selectmen. Best regards, G. Matthew Clark.
Anyone else present to speak? There will be another opportunity at the end of the meeting for anyone wishing to speak. The next item is correspondence. You will see a list of correspondence in your packet. And they are available in the selectmen's office. Any questions about those members? Alright, next item is first selectment report. I'm going to once again mention the presidential election coming up on November 3rd. Our registrars are working diligently. They're actually in a training, as we speak, with poll workers in preparation for this election, which has certainly changed due to the pandemic and COVID situation. It will be the polling location, just for the record, has moved from the Town Office Building to Hall Memorial School Gymnasium for this particular election. Again, that was to allow for better social distancing and one way in and one way out. If you recall at our last meeting, postcards were being sent to all residents and they were sent to all registered voter households. So if someone didn't get one, it's very possible they were not a registered voter. In, same, I'm sorry, same day registration will be at the Town Office Building. If you are registered to vote, you're going to vote in person, you'll go to the gym. If you are looking to register to vote on that day and you've missed the deadline, you will vote here. If you go to Hall School Gym, they will direct you to the Town Office Building. The Assistant Assessor Position, the job posting closed last Wednesday. And you'll see at the end of this meeting, we'll have an executive session to begin that process. So hopefully, we will have someone within the month in that position. The, we can check off the Administrative Assistant Position. We officially welcomed Heather to the Town, Heather Sharply, to the Town Office Building. She began last Tuesday and is doing a great job. For first day, we had, let's see, most of the day, no phones, no internet and no email. But other than that, it was a pretty successful week. So we welcome Heather. The Emergency Communications Task Force, we were set to meet on Wednesday, the 7th of October, and we had that windstorm that took out power and internet at my home where I was just starting the meeting. So we didn't meet and we are meeting again this Wednesday, the 21st. So we'll update you at our next meeting, what happens there, such is the nature of meeting online. The steep grant that we've been awaiting on this morning, I received an email from OPM that they were meeting with the Governor's Office and that awards should be made very shortly and they apologize again for the delay. So I'll keep you posted on whether or not our steep grant was awarded. Moving on to new business, we, oh no, I'm sorry, Public Works. Public Works, the things they've been working on, roadside mowing is continuing around town. They've installed two new catch basins on Batty Road. We were finally able to burn the brush pile at the transfer station. That was, that was starting to become quite a concern for us and the drought and dry conditions really are making it difficult to burn. We got just enough rain and a cool day and we're able to get that done. They've done some spot paving and paved a portion of Pine Crest on Village Hill and paved a portion of Pine Crest Road. Our crews have been servicing the trucks in the shop in preparation for our favorite season, winter and snow, picking up trash at River Road Park. They are currently working on replacing a catch basin on Fisher Hill. They've been digging out waterways around town. And today they chipped and opened up Burma Road due to downed trees. So as always, busy in Public Works. We have one tax refund this month, this week. I will move to refund Lauren C. Moonard, a certificate of correction in the amount of $20.09.
I'll second.
Seconded by John, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's three ayes, passes unanimously. Our next item, we have some reappointments to the WISE Committee. I will make the first motion to reappoint Don Berg on the WISE Committee effective November 5th, 2020, expiring November 4th, 2023.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, three ayes, thank you. I will make a motion to reappoint Pam Wheeler on the WISE Committee effective November 5th, 2020, expiring November 4th, 2023.
I'll second.
Seconded by John, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Guys have it. And last, I will move to reappoint Norm Maydo on the WISE Committee effective October 20th, 2020, expiring November 4th, 2022.
Second.
Seconded by Liza, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, I'd like to thank Don, Pam and Norm for their continued work for, on the WISE Committee and service to Wellington. Thank them all. Alright, last meeting. John, you'd asked that the roof project be put on our agenda and discussed. So I will share a couple of notes and then we can discuss. At the last Board of Education meeting, which was last Tuesday, the 13th, the Board of Education met and this item was addressed and the superintendent noted that he was ready to move forward. They were five weeks into the new school year and he felt like things were under control there and he was ready to move forward. As you know, we don't have a facilities director. This is just another hat that typically, at its past practice, you know, superintendents would do. Our, our town meeting called for allowing the superintendent to apply to the Commissioner of DAS to accept or reject a grant for these items. So the superintendent without question has to be involved in this process. They're actually the only individual who can currently apply for the grant. And so also at that meeting, after that report, a member of the Board of Education asked the superintendent to get them information on cost of having someone facilitate this project. So they will be addressing that at their next meeting. It's not a cost that I'm sure they budgeted for. I know it's not a cost that CIP budgeted for, but the superintendent plans to bring that information back to the board as requested. So in the, just for discussion purposes, the, and this was shared with the Board of Education from the superintendent. The timeline on this project was that in December of 2018, this item was submitted to the Capital Improvement Project Committee. On May 7th of 2019, the budget referendum passed and included the roof replacement. And a grant application at that point couldn't be submitted until we had a town meeting to move forward. In November of 2019, the Board of Education, and remember this is the Board of Education project, requested that the Board of Finance to complete a 10-year roof patching on both schools. Because at that time, we had some concerns with information shared from DAS that you needed a 20-year commitment on schools in order to move forward with the project. And there was some concern because there was, we were starting a school building committee and that there was question if we were to get this grant, if we were going to have to pay it back. The Board of Finance denied that request and said that they wanted the roof projects completed with or without grant funding. And so that's where we left then, January. So that was again, last November. In January, the Board of Ed and the Board of Finance requested a town meeting call. I'm sorry, the Board of Ed requested that we call a town meeting for roof patching. That was done at the end of January and they did do patching on those roofs, just for information purposes. Mr. Clark's letter spoke to me texting the selectman, the, I'm sorry, the superintendent about whether or not they're leaking. The question that was asked by the Board of Finance, so that we're in complete context there, was whether or not they were still having issues after the patching. And his response was, no, the roofs were not currently leaking. The patching seemed to have worked. Last February, a, an RFP was, began for Architectural Services for the full complete roof project. On February 18th, an RFP mandatory walkthrough happened. On February 26th, the RFP was due to the superintendent. On March 11th, a town meeting for the full roof projects was done and approved. And if you recall, on March 10th, the day before our meeting, the governor declared a public health emergency in the state of Connecticut. And within several days, things in the state COVID-19 shut down the schools on March 13th and then the state. So the superintendent has spoke to his board, to the Board of Education on multiple occasions about the fact that there was not the ability to have those in-person meetings that needed to happen at that point. And again, without a facilities director, the superintendent, as well as the, the rest of, I would say our staff were focused on COVID and pandemic issues. Not that the roof issue is not important, it still needs to be done. The discussion happened at CIP, the discussion happened at multiple boards that regardless of what the town were decided to do about our school facilities. And that is the intention of both, of the Board of Education who's made that decision. So, you know, here we are now and I'm not sure, you know, what you two would like to say on the, the matter. It's being addressed and the Board of Education and the superintendent are ready to move forward with the project. I don't believe there was ever any intent to not do this or that it was not needed. He had gone to them to look at putting some money into patching the roof so that we could stop the leaking issue that was going on until the roof project could be completed. There was, the goal at that town meeting in March 11th was to apply to the Department of Administrative Services for the grant in April. That couldn't happen. It didn't happen as things shut down. The ability to apply at that point, what was off the table. And if, you know, you can all certainly understand why.
We, um, just, just have some questions. It seems to be taking a very long time to do it. And I noticed we have managed to do other things during that period of time. We did fix the septic system at Center School, which we needed to do. I'm glad we did it. It was something that, that got done during this period of time. And every time we were asked in the past, it's gonna get done, it's gonna get done. It doesn't get done, the town meeting. There were things I think could have been done. We were going to establish school building committee for the Center School Partial Roof Replacement and a separate item, school building committee for the Hall School Partial Roof Replacement Project. I don't think that was, that could have been done and was not. And that would get us starting because at some point, I think it was, where was that? I got too many minutes here. The superintendent couldn't, said he was getting, was too busy with getting school reestablished coronavirus and he can't give the roof project his attention right now. He discussed the possibility of turning over management of the project to another party like a consulting firm. Superintendent Stevens thinks it would cost $20,000 to $30,000 to bring in a consultant to take over management of the contract from the town's point of view. That might be necessary. Do we have a timeframe? You know, am I gonna be here six months from now saying, when are we gonna do it? Oh, we're getting on it, we're getting on it. I don't want, I don't want that to happen.
So I would say that the, the town meeting, the item was to see if the townspeople on the recommendation would establish a school building committee. Precedent and past practice for similar projects in the schools have been that the superintendent has done that. The superintendent was the, filled that role for the oil tank replacement for the last Center School Roof Project for the Center School parking lot. Originally, our interim superintendent was that for the oil tank and Superintendent Stevens was taking on that role in this case as well. Again, I don't believe it's not that they don't need the project, that they don't want the project. The Board of Ed certainly, until this last meeting, understood why at this point. And they had put the patch on, there was concern that, that were the roofs still leaking? And, and the answer to that had been no. And they're ready to move forward with this. Is there funding for $20,000 to $30,000? I would say no, because the estimates for the project came in at the, you know, roughly million dollars that was allocated. So any additional funding would need to be addressed in a simple, in a separate manner. And whether or not we, you know, address that. Well, you know, where's the funding going to come from? We, we don't have access to that, so I can't, we can't just say tonight, we're going to go out and hire another firm with what funds.
Well, that, that's, that's a very good question. The, this was the, apparently the superintendent's recommendation. Another recommendation that we've had is, could we have the town engineer look into this? Somebody needs to be doing this. And when we talk about increasing in cost, I mean, prices are going up now, especially since COVID. So we've committed the money as of last March to do this and now we're seven months in advance and I'm sure prices have increased there.
So the concern there and the concern from the superintendent is that, that again, they had done the RFP and they were ready, right, in, in March to apply before the 10th of April in that next cycle. And the bids that they get are good for 90 days. So he's working with DAS to see if there's any, you know, what they can do with that timeframe based on COVID and the pandemic. In those first 90 days from the, from that February point, I, I don't believe they would have been able to hire and get things done when they weren't able to meet in person. Imagine, you know, doing all of your bidding, I'm sorry, building specs over Zoom. Probably not the, the best way to, to have done the project. And certainly, all of those departments had their hands full at that time. And, and so I know certainly cost is an issue. Again, nobody, excuse me, as my lights go out, in February, when the RFP was sent out, did anyone foresee that a month later, we would have seen the shutdown that we saw? I don't think anyone could have foreshadowed our schools closing their doors on March 13th and not opening up again until September 8th. This was
I would also, I would, I would like, I would just want to sort of add to this conversation that I'm a little frustrated by the frustration because to be having this conversation and not remembering the extent of the work that our schools had to do just to function and educate our children for the last, I don't even know what month we're in because everything's a blur. But if we can't stop and pause and reflect on the context in which we're currently functioning, then I, like I, there's really nothing further to say about this delay. I think it's quite clear and quite obvious that any delays that are going on right now are related to the fact that the world literally shut down back in March and we're still trying to figure out how to catch up. So, um, we can do, we can have conversations about how to move forward. I think the assumptions of, you know, Mr. Stevens' intent in that letter that you read, John, is somewhat frustrating to me in that at no point did the assumption, did any of the assumptions take into account the fact that the world shut down. So I sort of want to bring a little bit of reality back into this conversation. I think we can talk about how to move forward, but anybody that does not understand why we're in the delay that we're in is pretending that things are not completely wacky and outside of the scope of normal for nearly a year. So I just wanted to put that in there because I'm getting frustrated by the conversation that is sort of pretending that, that there's some sort of malicious intent behind a delay when our schools have had to do work that is unprecedented. that there's some sort of malicious intent behind a delay when our schools have had to do work that is unprecedented of any school system in modern history.
I completely agree. And I went to the Board of Education meeting last week. I attended their Zoom meeting last week because this item had been asked to put on our agenda, so I wanted to hear what, what, if anything, they had to say, so it would help us understand where we would go moving forward. And I heard very clearly the superintendent say, we're at the point now, five weeks in, getting a grasp on completely changing the way education has been done, not just in Wellington or Connecticut, but in this country, and we're ready to move forward. And his board seemed to, to be ready to hear that and move forward with that. And then there was a member who asked about getting prices for them to have someone else facilitate this. To me, which slows it down just a little bit, but you know, I'm not sure there's a clear understanding where that funding is going to come from. Whether we directed and say, or whether the Board of Education. Again, this is a Board of Education project. Our role in this is calling a town meeting to, to see, to get the townspeople to vote, and they voted in favor of the project. I agree, it needs to be done. I agreed it needed to be done a year ago. There's no argument there. Everyone at the table knew this project needed to be done, and it was important. I will even entertain the accusations in the letter read by Mr. Clark. I think they're fully without merit. The process had begun. An RFP had been solicited. And they were due to the superintendent on February 26th. So this process was well underway. Again, the world stopped, and here we are today. And a week ago, I heard a superintendent say he's ready to move forward and continue this process, and is. Is contacting DAS, is trying to understand how you pick up from a process that was left a year ago and what that can mean for them. So, you know, my take on this is that we ensure that, you know, through our statements at the Board of Education, that this project is moving forward and that they are, you know, that the superintendent is moving forward in this roof replacement. That's, that's the intent I clearly heard. I don't know if their minutes are out and available for you to read, but they'll, they'll be there when you do, if not already. He said he was ready to move forward with this project. Again, he was ready to move forward with it in February. He was ready in March.
I think we've kind of covered this topic at this point, and I'm not sure what else there is to discuss. So unless there's other questions, I would suggest we move on.
John, anything else from you?
Well, I'm hoping that we'll see some, see some progress on it. That's all I can say right now. We've discussed the matter as much as we can tonight, I think. So what's, and I might have some questions on it after we've discussed the next, the next agenda item here about calling the town meeting.
Alright, so I'm gonna move on to item D, call the town meeting. I move the town of Wellington Notice and Warning Special Town Meeting. The electors of the town of Wellington and all persons who are entitled to vote in town meeting on the matters mentioned in the following warning are hereby warned and notified to meet in town meeting at Hall Memorial School Parking Lot, 111 River Road, Wellington at 7:00 PM on Thursday, October 29th, 2020 for the following purpose. Item one, to see if the townspeople, based on the recommendation of the Board of Finance, will authorize the appropriation of $135,000 from the Nonlasting Education Fund for Wellington Public Schools to install ventilation relative to COVID-19 at Centre Elementary School and Hall Memorial School. Dated at Wellington this 19th day of October 2020. Wellington Board of Selectmen, Erica G. Wischinsky, Liza Boritz, John Blessing. Is there a second?
A second?
Second by Liza. Any discussion?
Yeah, I haven't seen, I haven't seen the minutes for that meeting yet, so I'm not sure exactly what we're talking about here. As far as a as far as ventilation, what are we, what are exactly, exactly are we installing?
So that, all of the details of that can be, would be shared at a town meeting before any vote would be taken. There's, there'll be information the superintendent will share with you on a project that needs, believed needs to be done in order to follow the reopen guidelines for our schools.
Okay, that's October 29th.
Next Thursday.
10 days from now. Will there be information promulgated to the, to the citizens prior to this meeting? Do we have something sent out on the?
I, that I don't know. We typically have the information made available at the town meeting. It's not, it's not typical that we send it out townwide, but if I have the information to share, I will.
Just, everybody's gonna walk in there today and be handed a piece of paper and saying, here's, here's what we wanna do, and I'll vote yes or no.
And like every other town meeting, John, there's opportunity for questions regarding the matter. That is not uncommon. And they would ask those questions. Are, this motion is whether or not we call a town meeting? Of the project at the town meeting.
I understand that. And we discussed the merits of the project at the town meeting, which means somebody walks in, has no idea what's, what we're talking about, and then they are told what we're talking about. And then they can ask any questions without a chance to digest it and find out what we're talking about. I'll vote, yes, we'll have the town meeting. I will vote in favor of that, but I would find it a lot easier to support this at the town meeting if I knew what was going on. And as of now, I wanna say I do support this. But I'd like to have a chance to know more about what was going on. So, with that.
Any other discussion? Right, all those in favor of the motion of calling a town meeting?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We did talk after our last town meeting about some enhanced safety precautions so that folks could speak on a microphone, and so we'll be working towards those. And we chose that space because the lighting underneath, the lights there in the parking lot at the school would allow for better visibility. So we're taking our town meeting show on the road once again. Thank you. The next item is adopting an MOU from the Eastern Connecticut Conservation District. Alright, so you were each shared the information that came to my office. So over the past two years, the Eastern Connecticut Conservation District, in collaboration with other watershed communities and other stakeholders, are developing a watershed protection plan for the Natchog River Basin. The purpose of the plan is to protect the quality of surface and groundwater within the Natchog River Basin from degrading over time. The surface and groundwaters within the basin provide drinking water to local residents either through wells or the Willimantic Reservoir. This MOU that were being asked, I would be asked to sign it, and we would be given permission to, is also going out to the town of Ashford, Chaplain, Eastford, Mansfield, Union. Yes, Wellington, Wyndham, and Woodstock. So, all of us in the Eastern Conservation District are being asked to sign the same MOU. I will read the MOU, which whereas the rivers and groundwater in the Natchog River Basin, the Fenton River, Mount Hope River and Natchog River provide high-quality drinking water to residents throughout its watershed, and the forests therein are essential to purifying the water. And whereas the rivers and forests in the watershed provide rich habitat for a wide variety of flora and fauna. And whereas the natural resources are critical to maintaining the lifestyles and social and economic well-being of residents within the watershed. And whereas the watershed towns under the Natchog River Basin Conservation Compact previously entered into a voluntary compact authora, I'm sorry, acknowledging their commitment to working collaboratively to balance conservation and growth. And whereas the undersigned have collaborated to develop the Natchog Healthy Watershed Action Plan. And so signing this MOU would demonstrate support for the plan. Be represented on the plant advisory board to meet regularly to review progress and implementation schedule. Participate in the development of the public outreach plan. And the eight watershed municipalities shall incorporate the natural, I'm sorry, Natchog River Healthy Watershed Plan into their municipal plan of conservation and development. So I so the signing, you, what were, the motion is to authorize me to sign this on behalf of the town of Wellington.
I will second.
Any other discussion? I, I can tell you that at, at least Ashford we know of is planning, it has this on their agenda for their meeting tonight as well, and also plan to, to sign. Alright, all those in favor of authorizing me to sign the memorandum of understanding?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. COVID update. Alright, so we are, Wellington number is up to 27 cumulative cases of COVID-19 with one probable case. So we, you know, we see in small increments and not, not, not a large undertaking. With that, I will tell you that the town level response framework has been changed by the governor, and this was as of last week. I'm going to share my screen with you all. Let's see if Heather can allow me to share my screen. Heather, I think if you click on the arrow next to share screen, it should say multiple people simultaneously. There we go. Okay. You know, see this beautiful yellow, orange, and red chart? So as of last week, the governor changed the framework and data tracking, so the average daily rate of COVID-19 cases among persons living in community settings per 100,000 population by town. And this map will come out weekly, and if you're in the gray zone, you know, those lower risk, I apologize, my lights go off here. You're less than five cases per 100,000 or less than five reported cases, which currently Wellington is in. As those percentages and those numbers go up, then the tracking would change to either, I wanna make sure, I'm gonna say yellow, gold, but they changed, one second here. To either yellow, orange, or red. And so there are things that they're encouraging you to do as individuals, as communities, organized groups, businesses, and schools. If you hadn't already heard, Wyndham, which is awful close to us, has seen an uptick in cases and they are in the red. It gives you the ability to make some changes, and you can revert as a community. The executive order attached to this allows myself, if need be, and there would be consultation with many others, including the Health District, to revert back to Phase Two for businesses and other sector roles here. So this weekend, Wyndham did take that step. Their schools went to two weeks of online learning. They dialed back to Phase Two. And you would be encouraged as individuals to do some of the things, you might limit your trips outside of your home. So we'll share this guidance. This and all the other COVID guidance is available on the COVID website. Which is ct.gov backslash coronavirus. And just about everything you could want to know about coronavirus is here, so we're following that very closely. I had an Eastern Highlands Board of Directors meeting last week, where we shared, as you know, our town hall is still close to the public but open by appointment. So if someone were to call here and make an appointment with any given department, they would be helped. We have not turned anyone away. If someone has come to the town hall and without an appointment, and that department is available to help them, they have been helped. I would say very few cases have they been asked to wait until somebody who was there with an appointment was helped. So we have been able to service all of our residents, no matter what their visit to us is for, whether it's for a pistol permit, for a marriage license, copy of a birth certificate, to go into the vault to do some research, to pay taxes, to see the assessor, to visit land use, if they need to do, business cannot be conducted any other way, but in person, we have accommodated them just by appointment. And most of the towns in our Health District are operating the same way. Currently Coventry and Talent are open. But others are closed, including Mansfield. So we're continuing on that path, not just for lack of social distancing here or safety. It's the safety of, of our residents, but also the safety of our staff. We have, as you know, we have a very small staff here. If we were to have multiple people down with COVID, there's a very likely chance our town hall would shut down. We wouldn't be able to function. So if it were to go through a business like it has in some cases, or a family, we could really be impacted here. So we're trying to lessen that impact, not just to our residents, but to our staff as well. And taking all the necessary precautions. But again, no one has been turned down from assistance in whatever their business is here. That's what we're here for. And we'll continue to work in that manner. Let's talk about Halloween. There is some concern about trick-or-treating, and I have been asked multiple times, what is the town going to do about Halloween? My response, and I don't want it to sound flippant at all, is the same thing we've done every year on Halloween. The town does not organize or host Halloween. It is an individual activity, and although we encourage safety, and I will continue to encourage following CDC and state guidelines, and what you see on the screen are some of these, the state Halloween guidelines through the CDC. And one of the things that they tell you to avoid is your traditional trick-or-treating, traditional trick-or-treating, where treats are handed when you go to door-to-door, is discouraged. The website does have recommendations for what folks can do, and it's up to you. If a family wants to offer trick-or-treating and have their light on, that's certainly up to them. At this point, unless the two of you feel differently, I don't believe it's something that we, you know, would regulate or need to regulate.
Well, I do wanna say that we have, we have regulated it in the past, like if there's been a weather event and it's been unsafe. So there is some, like, right, there is some history of the town saying, we have, like, a few years ago, it was, we had downed wires because it was a big storm and we said
Down trees and wires, I think is it.
No trick-or-treating.
Right.
Right, because that's an imminent safety issue. This is also a public health safety issue. So I don't necessarily think it's all that different than there being a situation in which there's downed wires. And as a town, if we felt that we need to make some sort of a statement about what, about trick-or-treating, I don't think it's a ridiculous assumption that we may do that.
And I would say, I might agree with Liza, but enforceable action is what I've been asked by multiple people for.
Yeah, I mean, so are people asking you to cancel trick-or-treat, like?
I've had, I've had multiple requests to cancel trick-or-treating. I had some that have asked me to make sure that trick-or-treating doesn't get canceled, that you allow for trick-or-treating. You know, others asking for me to close roads down in particular neighborhoods, that, you know, we do have one neighborhood over the rest that tends to be the go-to place in Wellington. We are a small town.
I am very familiar with that phenomenon, being on that street.
And so, you know, do we close the roads? I'm not sure that that's
No, I mean, I wouldn't even, I wouldn't even consider that. I would, I would consider No, I mean, I wouldn't even, I wouldn't even consider that. I would, I would consider a conversation, though, about, you know, because be, being a person in that neighborhood that we are talking about, where everybody goes to, you know, I have been debating back and forth about what makes sense. I think there's going to be people here, right? At this point, because there had, we haven't said anything like trick-or-treating needs to happen in a different way. There's no door-to-door trick-or-treating, or what, because we haven't said that. I think there's going to be a lot of people here. And not just people from Wellington, but, you know, I've been here previous years, and there've been people that I know from other towns who come here because they have friends that are here. So, um, it is a very large activity. There's tons of people here on a typical Halloween. As you all know, you sat with me, Erica, last year for a bit in my yard. I went through five giant bags of candy before trick-or-treating was even over. There's hundreds and hundreds of people on a typical year. So it is a little bit concerning, and even if we don't close it down, I think there is some value in having a conver- conversation about recommendations for what people should and should not do on Halloween.
So with that, John, your thought, I'll give you an opportunity to, to speak before I.
If you, uh, well, we have right on our screen here, recommendations for Halloween 2020, or trick-or-treating, which look like, um, pretty smart recommendations. To me, closing, closing roads down would be unproductive, and I don't know how you would really enforce it. I mean, just close the road, nobody goes on the road. I don't think you want to do that. This stuff here sounds, sounds pretty good. Maybe make a card, mail it out, or, uh, at least send it out on the town website.
That's probably better.
And have people, uh, and let people know that that's, these are the recommendations. Most people, I think, will follow them.
Right, and these recommendations, again, they're not us coming up with what we think people should do. These are public health recommendations made by the CDC and Connecticut Department of Health. So what they're encouraging instead of your traditional trick-or-treating, you can see here, is one-way trick-or-treating. And that doesn't mean one way down a road. That means that it's not folks going up to a door, but something be placed at the door so they're coming and getting, so there's less contact. Right, you're not coming in contact with folks. If people choose to hand out candy, you know, wear your face mask, wash your hands, sanitize, those things. So, you know, the most I could see us doing is promoting the safe manner of trick-or-treating. But if we were to choose, let's say, this one particular neighborhood and another neighborhood in Wellington were to get inundated with trick-or-treaters, and we didn't take that, that's certainly another level of liability or risk. I, I'm in, I'm in favor of putting out the guidelines to the entire town. And, um, you know, encouraging them to enforce these. And again, we don't typically, the only time, and I know it was controversial then, despite trees and wires down in neighborhoods, to cancel Halloween. And this did, this topic was addressed with our neighboring towns at the Eastern Highlands Health District Meeting. Uh, and the overall consensus from the town leadership there was, you know, encouraging people to follow the CDC and DPH guidelines for safe trick-or-treating and safe Halloween activities. So unless you had another thought, we'll put together a flyer with these things and the website that folks can go to and address this. And, and I'll encourage all of our residents to, um, you know, think not just, think, think outside their self, uh, think beyond themselves, um, in others, and, um, maybe our need to, to go trick-or-treating and how that could affect another family. And to just take in a moment to think outside ourselves, think beyond ourselves. Alright, let's see what else I have for COVID. November 7th, Eastern Highlands is going to be holding a flu clinic that is open to the public. And it'll be free, and it's in Mansfield. So as I get more details, we'll make sure we share that. Any other COVID-related questions? There are, and I don't have all the details to share with you, it just, the governor talked about his press conference, which I've heard about, but haven't had an opportunity to watch, and I haven't gotten documentation on it to thoroughly vet yet. There, he's making some changes to the travel restriction guidelines. It seems as though it was getting a little large and harder to enforce. And so he's making some changes to what states and travel locations would, would be on that list. So we'll share that as more information comes out. And when it does, once again, it will be available on the coronavirus website, which is accessible from our webpage in the COVID-19 tab. So we'll see how that goes. Alright, any, anything else? Questions concerned? Alright, with that, that brings us to present to speak. I'm going to stop sharing my screen. And ask if there's anyone present to speak, that they identify themselves for the record, and limit yourself to two minutes. Yes.
Can you hear me? Great, thank you. Peter Litencich, 97 Trust Group. I apologize for missing the earlier present to speak, but I, I also wanted to, um, speak in support of the school building projects for the two roofs on Hall and Center School. These are major town assets, and I think the entire community would like to see it go forward. I completely agree with Liza's comments on the extraordinary circumstances that you both made, all three of you made, uh, with the schools and COVID, and appreciate that fully. And it's quite possible that the school will face other challenges of a similar nature. If there was a second wave, or the governor's order was extended, it's hard to anticipate what could happen. I would suggest this board, for that reason, provide the superintendent with more support, not less. And having the building committee for the roofs makes a lot of sense to me. They could act as a body that would move through the process of being ready for the summer to install the two new roofs. And I would encourage the board to solicit townspeople to join that committee, as they did for the new school building committee, so that we had a group of citizens. I'm sure we have capable people in town who are roofing contractors and such, that could serve on such a committee, provide the support to the Board of Education and the superintendent, which, as everyone acknowledges, is, has quite a few challenges in front of it. And then be ready for the summer when the schools are vacated to install the new roofs. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else present to speak? Alright, seeing none, I'm going to move on to good and welfare. I sound like a broken record, and I promise you, at our next meeting, it'll be the last time you hear me say, our polling location for the presidential election on November 3rd will be at Hall School Gym and not here at the Town Office Building. Just before our meeting, uh, our town clerk shared with me a note of interest. I think you all will find, so far, the town clerk's office has issued 1,010 absentee ballots. From applications, 600 have been returned. So we are currently in possession of 600 of those 1,010 ballots, and those ballots will be opened on Election Day and not prior to. So folks still have time to get their absentee ballot applications in, and an absentee ballot to them, if that's how they choose to vote, or vote in person. For reference sake, four years ago, the town clerk's office processed 100 absentee ballots, and that's a lot. So.
That's like a third of our vote, our eligible voters have, are, have, yeah, have, has, have done the absentee ballot.
Yeah.
Wow.
600 have come in. She did, um, she did mention, she hadn't checked the box yet tonight. So we could be over the 600 ballots received back. So everyone has a different voting plan. There may be folks who received an absentee ballot, but still hope to vote in person. If you've received one and you don't turn it in, you can still vote in person. You can only vote in one manner, though. You either vote in person or by absentee. So if you return that absentee ballot, unless you withdraw it within the timeframe, you cannot vote in person. You go vote in person, you cannot then turn in an absentee ballot. There are voter fraud laws. And so people need to be cautious and understand the rules. Um, I need to publicly, uh, here in this meeting, thank our Assistant Tax Collector, Michelle Seer, for stepping forward and assisting in the selectman's office with both our meeting minutes and here on her days, sometimes in the tax office, and there are days where she was not scheduled to work there, to help out answering phones, opening mail, doing some things that just needed to be done between Robin leaving us and Heather being hired. So I certainly could not have gotten through this time without her help. And also thank Robin, uh, who's been doing double duty for most of her first month and a half in the town clerk's office. So we are very fortunate to have such hard-working and supportive team members here at, at the Town Office Building. Those are just two instances. This, uh, the staff really steps up when, uh, when we need something, but I wanted to make sure, I thank them both. It's been quite a hiring circle, and, and, and we couldn't do it without them. So with that, I, John or Liza, do you have anything for good and welfare? Okay. I will then make a motion to enter into executive session for the Assistant Assessor Hiring Committee and invite Janice Clausen and Walter Topliff.
I'll second.
Second by John, any discussion? Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
I thank the rest of you who have joined us. Heather, you can hit pause on the recording. And if you don't leave and we escort you out of the meeting, it's simply because it's an executive session, so I apologize.